Welcome, everybody. We're at the April 20th Select Wars Meeting. Is everybody here? I don't see Tyler.
He's here.
I only see Tony, John, and Donna.
Tyler's here, Chris is here, Rain is here, Dawn is here, Steve Sorif is here, Leanne Gast is here.
Okay, we're gonna call to order this meeting. We'll forego the pleasure allegiance this time, unfortunately. So I guess we'll go right into the manifest. I had some issues trying to download the manifest to take a look at it. Is this what I'm looking at now? It's kind of... What do you have up on the screen there, Tony?
Say again, you want, what do you want up?
The manifest. I had a hard time downloading it.
Okay, hold on, let me... I think I have to go get them again.
How's everybody doing with this?
Seems to be the new norm right now.
Is what it is. Dylan.
Uh, which one is this? This one is Accounts Payable.
I briefly just went through this. Well, I see it now, Tony.
Yeah.
Nothing really stands out with me if everybody's good with it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it. The other one's the payroll manifest, right? Yes, this is payroll, yeah.
So is everybody good with this one?
Yep.
Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the manifest?
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the Accounts Payable manifest for April 20th, 2020, and the payroll manifest for April 21st, 2020.
Second half. There was a motion on the second, all in favor?
Aye, Don, aye, Dennis.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Oh, aye, Tony Dumas.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tyler Eaton.
Hey, guys, can I just make a message, uh, just make a suggestion for protocol during this? When we all have to do a I or an A, why don't we just do it alphabetically? And then, then there's no talking over anybody and no, uh, no question, does that sound all right?
Yeah, that's what we did last time and it worked out pretty well.
Yeah.
I knew it would screw it up because I'm going before Tyler.
That's okay.
Okay, so we're all set with these manifests? Back to the agenda.
Prove the minutes. Can we postpone that for the, till the next meeting? I have not had an opportunity to, actually, wait, four, six?
Yeah, that was our last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, no, I'm good with that one, I'm good with it. Sorry, still getting used to this whole Zoom thing.
So you, you wanna postpone or you don't?
No, no, we're good, we're good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of four, six, 2020.
Second.
Do we have a motion on the second, all in favor? Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Aye, Don, aye, Dennis.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Tyler Eaton.
John Warren.
Yeah, alright.
Alright, reports from the science committees? Obviously, budget's done for the season, anything on planning?
Planning has not met.
Are you still working the, uh, the communication issue with that?
Um, I have with, well, with Joanna, so, um, she had, I think that zoning had a meeting, or, or she was getting ready for a meeting that they had coming up. So I've been working with her and she's gonna be the, the official host for both planning and zoning since she attends both. So I've still got a few items to go over with her. But I'm gonna create, part of what's coming out of this is, uh, I'm creating a cheat sheet for all of the board chairman so that they know how to set up their meetings correctly for public access and the automatic recording.
Okay. CIP, anything? We're probably done with that. Three hundred?
Three hundred, we're gonna have a Zoom conference call here in the near future. They're, they're working on setting it up now.
Okay, Marston?
Yeah, so with Marston, you know, we're actually on track still with Marston. The plan was, you know, to do the seeding this year that would set us up for next year, so we're still in position to do that. Sean and the guys from the highway department have, have been out there, or if not yet, they're going out there to take care of some erosion issues. We have paused fundraising, obviously, because of the times. Courtney did hear back from Major League Baseball saying we did not get the grant that we were hoping for, but they did refer to some additional grant opportunities. So, so she will be pursuing those. And Chris, I don't know if you have anything additional that might be more current on that?
No.
Okay, so, I mean, so fortunately, I guess, for Marston is that we're, we're still on track to where we had hoped to be, wanted to be at this time of year, minus the fundraising.
Okay. If there isn't anything else, town administrator report?
Alright, well, first and foremost, it appears that everybody's healthy. We don't have any reports of any employees being symptomatic or testing or down or anything. So, so far, so good there. We've talked a lot about the state park. We're still in the, uh, close the Round Pond Road on the weekends, close reservation road on the weekends, try to direct everything to the main gate. There were, since you've last met, there've been, I think, two search and rescue calls. That was last weekend, not this immediate past weekend, but the weekend prior. Yesterday was packed over there. We had, we had an officer stationed at the end of Round Pond Road, turning people away all day. And I believe, I heard secondhand that they, they closed the main gate of the park because the parking lot was full. So they're doing a brisk business when the weather's nice. No calls for us yesterday, so that's, uh, that's good news. Although our road closed sign at the end of Round Pond Road has been stolen a couple times in the three weeks we've been trying to do this.
Hey, Chris, I have a question on that. Like, I think up in, like, Tuckerman's area and up north, they've said that they're, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I heard that they said that they would not be doing any rescues for lost hikers. Do you know if that's true? And do you know if that's kind of like a, could we take any kind of a similar approach here?
The, the Tuckerman's thing is federal land. I believe it's part of the national forest, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I don't know the way, I mean, we could, we could just say call fish and game, we're not coming. I, I don't, I don't know that that's the position we wanna put our fire department in. The problem with Patuckaway is that you can't notify everybody of that very easily because there's so many ways to get in there.
Right.
You know, we, I know Fundy was jamming yesterday too with hikers as well as boaters. There's no, there's no personnel there, there's nobody, nobody's paying attention to Fundy. So there's, there's just so many ways to get into the park. Giving people fair notice would be really challenging too.
Yeah, okay.
I think, you know, we'd all love to be able to say that, but one of the, one of the calls last weekend, I know Chief Vilchuk didn't roll everybody right away. He held the, held our people at the station until he was able to get some more information about the situation. It wasn't emergent in the way that some are, so he's trying to minimize the impact where he can, where he thinks he has time, but that's, I think that's probably an outlier.
He's trying to triage a little bit better?
Yeah, get, you know, they get pretty good information sometimes from the 911 calls about location and condition of the people. And, you know, not every call may necessitate a full-blown roll-everybody kind of response. I think he's doing what he can there. Their default is obviously when somebody calls, we go, and, uh, I don't think we'll untrain them with that.
Right.
And related to that, in a, in a way, many cities and towns throughout the state are cranking up their pressure on campgrounds generally. Under the current governor's order, campgrounds are expected to open at some point. And the NHMA just on Friday made a pretty strong push with the governor to change that arrangement. Campgrounds, not just in the state parks, but the privately owned campgrounds that are all over the state are going to be quite a magnet for people that, uh, you know, wanna, wanna get outside, wanna get away from wherever they're stuck now, and are gonna cause all kinds of problems for municipalities, so you know, they're a little different than the state park campgrounds, but, you know, the, the park ground, the campground at Patuckaway is expected to open May 1st with, I think, 200 campsites in it, so we still have our fingers crossed there, but everything's waiting on the governor there.
So, Chris, um, up, up north in the, you know, in the north of the Lakes region, a lot of those towns bill for search and rescue. Is that something we could do to help pressure people into not being careless when they go out in the woods?
I, I, I have, I'll look into that. Again, notification is a, is a tough one, but, um, oh, I'll snoop around on that.
Yeah, because we could drop a sign at Fundy, you know, that says something like, you know, make sure you're prepared because we have to come get you, you're gonna pay. And, uh, you know, have the, have the park office deliver that message too, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, that, that was the end of my, my thought.
So I, I do think that one of the conversations at some point that we may wanna have with the park is that their, their maps and their trail markers are not exceptional. They, they are lacking, right? And so that may be something that we want to talk to them about trying to improve. Because, because their maps aren't great. And, you know, we've been out there in the past and kind of like lost a trail a little bit and, and had to backtrack, so. And we know the park, so I just, I think at some point, Chris, we had said we were gonna meet with them on a regular basis. That might be a topic we wanna address with them.
Okay. Yeah, for, for a tourist park, a southern tier, uh, you know, it, it, it's a confusing place to hike for lots of people.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's right. Anything else on Patuckaway?
Yeah, you know, just for comparison, just to add to Donna's thought, um, Franconia Notch is another one of those places where they have this spaghetti mess of trails. And, you know, they do a lot of search and rescue there, but their maps are, um, by far superior than what I've seen at Patuckaway. And they have a, it's like a one sheet, like a one-page, um, it's topographic, but it's, uh, you know, it's like brown and white, it's monochrome with, with black dotted lines for the trail system. At the very least, if you're somebody, you know, even if you're not experienced with proper maps, I mean, I, I learned on military topographic maps and, and I tell you, I think that the maps up in Franconia Notch are far superior because even without a compass, you can terrain associate, you know, this hilltop, that stream, this pond. You know, you can correlate your own position based on other markers on the map. Can't do that with what they give you at Patuckaway, those are all like, like somebody drew it on a weekend, you know, and photocopied it, they're, they're lackluster.
And I guarantee- Miles are on it and stuff like that, say if you're gonna do this Fundy loop, it's two and a half miles, you know, from here to there, they give you some sort of. But again, again, we're just looking at a large influx of people wanting to get outside. This isn't, I mean, we do a couple rescues a year, but we're in a situation where people just wanna get out. And you're gonna find the stupid people that are ill-prepared to go out. It's just gonna happen with the amount of people. I mean, I've been here forever and I'm, I never recall a springtime like this where you would fill up the park trails and there'd be this many people out there doing this and just... I don't think we should find anybody for being stupid because there's, that's just inevitable. You're gonna find the people that are out there that are just gonna, you know, they're not gonna look at the maps, they're available in, at the front office in the state park. They're available online off the state's website, off the state park website, you can download and print them. It's just people just taking walks and not being prepared. And I understand that this is stupid, but you know, hopefully, we won't have this problem when things get into full swing, you know, back into the season with the state park and they have their full staff, you know, for all the campers, but this is my two-bit.
Alright, nothing else on Patuckaway?
Not for me.
We've been busy with various audits lately. The tax collector transition audit is done. I don't know if we've sent you that document, I'll do that if I haven't. That's all clean and good. The New Hampshire retirement system did an audit of our books for the first time in, I think, 10 years. And found a couple of ancient minor problems that Betsy's fixing that go back eight, nine years, 11 years, a very, very long time ago, just correcting some contributions to pension things. But generally, pretty clean. And our annual audit by Plazek and Sanderson is underway now. Just getting started.
What, with the New Hampshire retirement system, what prompted that audit? Or do they do it like on an every 10-year cycle or?
I, I think we just made our way to the top of the list, somebody figured out that it hadn't been done. I, I think it's intended to be done much more frequently, but
Yeah.
They're not, uh, they're not overstaffed there generally, so it was not something precipitated by anything, it was, it just was our turn.
Okay.
Change of emphasis for them, perhaps. Ledge Farm Road, we've got some decisions coming as we get further into the engineering and, uh, you know, what we've learned from last year's work. It's gonna be a different plan, but we don't really know what the plan is yet. The epping end of the road is probably gonna take more work than we had hoped. We're gonna go out and dig some, our, our guys are gonna go dig some test pits to get a good idea of what the road base is really like down on that end. We've got some repair work coming on the work we did last year. We're gonna have some decisions to make about cutting down trees on the remaining portion. EverSource requires eight feet from the power lines to the trees. And on either side of the road, if we, even if we move poles to the other side of the road, there's a, there's a significant amount of tree removal that we're looking at, so that's probably a decision we're gonna, um, we're gonna bring to you and to the planning board once we have it all drawn out. And, uh, so everything kind of feels like it's up in the air between now and town meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll come to a plan to, to recommend to you, but it's, it seems unlikely that we'll be able to finish everything this year with the amounts that we have appropriated. We might do better to, to spread it out another year and, and go through the freeze-law cycle and, and use what we learned last year to, uh, to make the remaining part of the job better. So I just, I stick a pin in that to say that we got more to come on it. Drive down it at some point, make yourself familiar with it because we're gonna, we're gonna need you to make some decisions in the next probably four weeks about how to move forward with that project. That obviously will get caught up in what our, our global financial situation is as we come into town meeting. You know, if we, if we wanna change our, our spending approach, that's one, one place that we're, we're probably gonna be looking at. And we don't, we don't know what asphalt prices are gonna be. With oil going through the floor, there may be opportunities there to either make this project cheaper or shuffle things around to take advantage of that. So we, we'll have more on it, maybe in two weeks, if not in two, it'll be four, but if you aren't, if you aren't familiar with it yet, take a slow drive down.
My mic on?
Yeah, I hear you, Ben.
Okay. Are there any roads other than Ledge Farm right now that's on the docket to be paved?
Uh, we have to do the top coat on Canton Court and Summer Street that we did.
Yeah, aside from those, aside from those roads.
No, uh, we, we came into this budget year thinking that we would use our shim and seal coat budget on Ledge Farm.
Yeah, okay, I remember that, okay.
Right, so, but we made, depending on how the engineering and the, and the process comes through on Ledge Farm, we might, uh, we might suggest a different approach and do some more paving of other places. I, we, I don't, I don't know that answer yet, but that's one of the possibilities we've kicked around.
Well, I think you, you brought up a good point with oil dropping, that's obviously gonna have an impact on asphalt and if there's an opportunity to take advantage of the, the lower pricing. You know, depending on what we do with Ledge Farm, might be feasible to, to maybe whatever was on the docket next year, move it, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't think we should pass up an opportunity to take advantage of a, obviously, low price of asphalt.
Yeah, that's one of the things, and obviously, Ledge Farm is gonna require some asphalt, but
Yeah.
there's a lot of other work on Ledge Farm that is not gonna be related to the price of asphalt, so those are the kinds of things we're just kicking around at this point, but those, those are gonna be decisions you'll need to make before.
So there's two trees that, you know, I think I brought to your attention before, they're marked right now, they're right on the bend of Ledge Farm where we, we did some on the road. That's not part of the, uh, the original contract to have them removed, is that an additional price, a different cost?
It's, uh, it, we've got, um, I don't know, I think it's EverSource, maybe it's FairPoint. Whichever the utility is that owns those poles on that stretch are gonna take those trees down, we've got them agreeing to pay for it. And, uh, I think those couple might be waiting for the remainder, the decision on the remainder of it, but, um, they're not under contract, we, we don't have to pay for them, so we're, we're waiting for the utility. I think there's two of them.
They didn't give you a timeframe, did they? Because I know one of them looks like it's leaning.
They, uh, they are very good at giving us squishy timelines.
Okay.
Rolling along, financial stuff generally. The NHMA last week did a survey of all the cities and towns about what, what our financial situation is, you know, where are our expenses and revenues. We talked a lot about that at your last meeting. The sense I got was that a, a lot of municipalities are in exactly the same boat we are, where expenses are manageable, but revenues are in trouble. They brought that message to Concord and are advocating for cities and towns to get some of that federal help, some of that needs to get carved out. And we need some protection on, um, highway grant, rooms and meals, revenue sharing items, as well as, uh, hopefully, getting some help with that federal money to help offset some of our revenue challenges that we know are coming, so. Uh, I think NHMA's been doing a good job of, uh, of speaking for all of us. It feels like they've got a little bit more attention than they sometimes do in the state house. Cities and towns get ignored pretty routinely there. So, uh, we're, we're in the same boat as a lot of other people, which you can take some comfort in that. We're all worried about the same things. Summer camp. Courtney and Bridget are preparing to run summer camp until we hear otherwise. We talked through some scenarios today about smaller camps, later starting camps. Everything's kind of, uh, wait and see still, they, they have to be ready to go on pretty short notice. If, if need be, they can probably, uh, you know, with a, with a go, go-no-go decision, if that go decision is the end of May, they can be ready. They think they're gonna be staffed up, they can get through registration and things, but there's maybe, maybe 80 to 100 families that are probably, uh, waiting, watching that very closely for summer purposes. You know, school being what it is and ending sooner. We're, we're hoping to be able to offer it, but that's gonna, that's gonna have to wait probably on the governor as much as anything. But I, they'll be ready either way. The hardest scenario is one where small gatherings are okay, but large gatherings are not. If you've read any of the, the reopening plans, some of them, some of the stages involve baby steps towards normalcy. Those scenarios are really hard to envision how we can run a camp. If you can only get together in a group of 10 or 20, you know, with the stay-at-home orders, you can't realistically run a kids' camp in groups of 10 or 20, that, we really have to be out of the woods in order to, to run a camp. We, we can't be a, we can't be a clinic, so they're, they're thinking through those things, they'll be ready if the opportunity is there, but it's feeling less and less likely that we're gonna be able to do that, but we'll be ready either way. Questions on that? And then lastly, um, if you, we, we've got a stack of things that need actual signatures, we had talked a little bit last time about electronic signatures, if, um, I, I don't think we have a viable way to do that now, so if you're able to come into the office to sign things, uh, or if you need us to deliver them, let us know. We're gonna tackle some assessing stuff shortly, that, that all needs signatures. And there's, you know, there's checks and random documents that we have that need member signatures, so bottom line there is, either let us know when you can come in or that you can't and we will get stuff to you somehow.
I'll be in to do checks tomorrow, Chris. I, I think I've done most of the assessing stuff that's there.
I think you have, yes.
I threw stuff on Thursday or when I was there.
What's that, John? What's that, John?
I assigned some paperwork on Thursday when I was there.
Okay, great, um. Yeah, there's a few things that need all five of you, uh, the assessing stuff will come to need all five of you. Uh, we can get by with three in the short term, but um, generally speaking. Um. We'll need everybody on them. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Chris, uh, action item review from last meeting.
Did we have any other than? To finish spinning up the. Virtual meetings? Has we done that? Seems to be working out okay.
Yeah, so far.
Can I ask a question? Who's responsible for capturing the action items?
I thought I was.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And and I have U S Springs property and prior priorities of the board.
What was the USA Springs one?
Uh, now we're viable to sell it.
Correct.
So we're looking forward at ways of moving forward on that. Um, in discussing that, how we're gonna approach that, right?
Yeah, I mean, I I see that as kind of like a topic, not an action item. To 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 be the action items, so the specific, you know, he said he would do X. I understand, John, that's a priority and that's something that we're gonna talk about that, but I see that as kind of like a major agenda item that has to get scheduled.
Yeah, the action items are things that, you know, um. Transition from meeting to meeting that, you know, uh, we don't want to fall off the radar.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, for example. We don't want the USA Springs to fall off the radar either. And I'm not here to find them, they're just, doesn't matter, I mean, just. However, you want to list out action items is what they are to what they are, it's just important things that we gotta keep in front of us.
If Tony says he's gonna go and get a quote for us to buy bulk paper clips. That's an action item. To me.
Yeah, and like if I say, yeah, I'll have it ready for next meeting. Then that's a to-do list type of thing.
Okay, that's how you guys do this, right?
But but honestly, the the chair should be working with Chris to schedule major topics for meetings. So that to me, USA Springs would be a ma- major topic to schedule for a meeting.
Are you in tomorrow, Chris?
What's up, Ben?
Are you in tomorrow?
I'm not in the office, but I am available.
Alright, well, uh. I'll I'll call you and we can touch base on that.
Okay.
Tyler's still with us, I haven't heard him in a while.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
So we talked about assessing approvals, um, was there more paperwork added since the last time I was there, Chris, as far as signing?
I don't know, I don't know, I'll I'll find out and let you know.
Okay.
Um, so what uh. The world where now you're you're taking over uh. What used to be the Board of Assessors responsibilities and Jonathan uh, Babin is here in Avatar, we'll. Get to that in just a minute, but uh, if you look at the agenda. This is uh. What we thought might work for you, you you can try it out and see if it works. Um, you don't have to sign documents in a meeting, uh, generally speaking. Uh, you don't have to, this is a big pile, but uh, you'll you'll have some of these things at most meetings. Um, if you want to. Sign those documents in the meeting after you've had a chance to look at them, uh, you can do that like you do with a manifest. Or you can sign them. Before the meeting, after the meeting, on your own time, when you come into the office, whether however you want, whoever you want to do it. Uh, if you if you don't want to sign them in the meeting. Uh, we can put them on the agenda like this and essentially notify the public that these are things that are going to happen. Uh, the signatures are going to happen at some point, um, doesn't have to be. In the in the middle of a meeting. Um, so we're we're kind of doing our our public notice requirements by. Slapping all these things on the agenda that are up for discussion and approval. Uh, I think you will find that most of these don't require any discussion, you will just, you'll look at the. Uh, staff and and assessing validation of them and sign them and not need to think about them. Um. But if there are items that you do want to talk about, uh, you can do that only in a meeting, so. Uh, what we thought we'd try is listing them all on the agenda, you can approve them in in bulk, um. If you want, you can pull some out and then approve the rest in bulk, uh, this is kind of the consent uh, consent agenda concept that I had mentioned to you a few meetings ago. Um, if you, you know, you want to just do things in one big fell swoop, we could. Uh, we could put the manifests in that consent agenda, we can put the minutes in there if you want. Uh, just, it's just a time-saving measure, uh, less motions, less uh, paper passing. Uh, so it's it's up to you how you want to do it, but we we threw this together to give you a taste of it. Um, so what what you need to do tonight, and we can do this after you talk with Jonathan, but we need you to. Uh, approve these things on the uh, assessing list and then uh, sign them at some point, doesn't it? Obviously, you're not gonna sign them tonight. Is that all clear as mud?
Clear as mud.
So, uh, sorry, Chris, so. Do you need approval plus signing or signing indicates approval?
I think you should get in the habit of approving them in the meeting and signing them whenever you want.
Okay. Alright.
So in the, in the um, material that was sent to us, there were. Sixteen items, fifteen of them are veterans credit applications, one's an elderly exemption. Have they already been vetted by the time they come to us in terms of supporting documentation?
Yes, uh, for things, and we'll get into this probably more with Jonathan, but for something like a veteran's credit, um. The that's pretty straightforward, uh, Kelly here, you know, vets all add checks to documentation and and. Uh, you won't see anything uh, that isn't vetted. Uh, unless it needs your discussion somehow, if you see it, you can assume that it's uh, been clear.
All the veterans forms are are accompanied with a DD two fourteen Arnold discharge, so they look good.
Yeah, and we can talk, we don't have to do this tonight, but we can talk about how you want to see all that documentation, that we we buried you an email, but um. We can just make that stuff available to you and give you a link to it if you prefer that. Um, we're. We're learning how, what what you want as well as what works kind of procedurally for us.
Chris, who's reviewing right now, John, Jonathan?
I'm sorry, Ben, what?
Ah, I got a bad connection here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Alright, um, who's who's reviewing them right now, too? Jonathan, right?
Uh, some things, some things Jonathan will get involved in and others Kelly handles herself, um. Something like a veteran's tax credit where uh, it's really either you are or you aren't, and the documentation's very clear. Um, most of those don't find their way to Jonathan, uh. Or other than maybe a passing look over, um. Oth- other more complex stuff uh, uh, will get reviewed by Jonathan.
Okay.
So, Chris, I think what you just said, correct me if I'm wrong, but can we do like? Bulk approvals? So it's like, you know, what are there, ten or twelve veterans credits? That you send to us, can we like make a a motion to present, to accept or approve all of the veterans credits? As one motion and then approve all of the elderly exemptions as another motion, is that how we do it or?
You can, since they're spelled out right there on the agenda, you can do the, you can do that whole list all at once if you want. In one motion.
Okay, and we we do not have to um. Name them individually, right?
No.
Okay. Alright. But do we have to name the ma- map in the lot?
No, I think if you, if if you uh. You know, you you can approve the uh, exemptions and credits listed on the agenda, could be.
Okay. Okay.
Assessing others? We're supposed to tie them together here.
We, yeah, do we want to go through this now and get them approved?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a motion that we approve the exemptions and credits as listed on the agenda.
Was that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll send it.
Yeah.
Tony seconds.
Now, we have a a motion in a second, all favor, I've been Violet.
I don't, I didn't.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Okay. And then you just want us to come in when we tend to sign them, Chris, is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
Generally, with the exception of uh, uh, timber stuff, um. These these will fall pretty easily into your routine um, two-week meeting schedule, so you can. Sign them while you're here for a meeting, if you aren't here, I'll.
So is that the approval today, is that gonna take effect for July?
Uh. For. Every everything you're you're doing now will take effect for the uh, April first tax year, I believe.
Okay.
In before April first, so.
Okay.
They will, they'll, yeah, you're you're thinking of the the bill in July, yes.
Yes, yes, thank you.
The the tax year starts April first.
I mean, anything else on assessing?
Yeah, uh, the a- assessing other is a uh, a u- unique thing for tonight, uh. And that is just to introduce you to Jonathan Babin who's here. Uh, Jonathan, wave Jonathan.
I just unmuted him.
Uh, he's unmuted now, Jonathan works for Avatar, he's our uh, our primary contract assessor, he's in the office once a month or so. He is the one that's uh, you know, handling the the more complex stuff in most cases for us. Uh, where this is you taking over assessing duties, I just wanted to make sure that you had uh. Sort of met him and just talked through briefly. What your responsibilities are now as a board, obviously John and and Donna have been doing this for at least a year. Um, and you two should weigh in anytime, but um. While you're wearing your assessing hats, you'll be, you'll be looking at Jonathan's work, uh, he'll be with us at meetings occasionally for. More more complex or contentious things, um. Most of the time he deals with the staff and and we bring things to you in writing, but. Um, I just wanted him to uh, say hello and walk through some of the basic stuff. And give us an update on the revow, uh, which um, hasn't changed much, but um. Just to check in on that, because that's a big item. Makes sense, Jonathan?
It certainly does, everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for having me tonight, I appreciate you having me remotely rather than, you know, in your in your. Your keep, um, but I did send some information to Chris earlier today, I know it's kind of last minute, so I know all of you have. Not necessarily had a chance to review it, so if you have questions, please let me know, I'm happy to answer them. Um, right now, a lot of what you saw earlier, um, for veterans uh, credits and elderly exemptions. Um, typically, you're gonna see those once a year in the springtime, um. Assessing is interesting because unlike a lot of things in the state, April first is the date, so the tax year always runs April first to March thirty first. Um, so. In essence, we're supposed to be assessing everything in town as it sits as of April first, obviously, things change during the year, but. Um, the way the law is written, we should be, you know, if a house is being built. And it's not completed on April first and it's complete, you know, in May. Uh, we'll be assessing it as incomplete for that entire year uh, until we come to the next spring, so. Annual pickups, um, exemptions, credits, these are things that all kind of happen in the springtime, so annual pickups would mean if a property has had, say, a building permit. Or an ongoing project or demolition, um, it's basically an inventory process. Um, most towns do not use inventory forms anymore, which would be a formal self-reporting. Um, some smaller communities still use those, but we don't in town, so. Um, hopefully that's not confusing, but basically, um. We flag properties that will need to be revisited to check, um, if they've had an addition. Uh, they've added a shed, something with a building permit, an ongoing project, uh, like I mentioned demolition. Uh, just to make sure we're accurately representing what actually physically exists at the property and its condition. Um, around that April first date, so we have an accurate picture of what is actually being assessed at the property. Um, you know, if someone has. I know last year there were a couple instances of, um, there were some fires in town, um, you know, we needed to go out and review those because. You know, as of April first, there was a house, but. You know, after that, there was an issue with the building, um, there's a special kind of circumstance for that. Where um, there is a mechanism in the law that allows us to kind of prorate that building based on the availability during the year. Um, so there are some rare things that you will see, um, but you know, we'll kind of walk through those together as we get to them, just. When they do, there's always gonna try and be a a good explanation as to why those things are occurring when they are. Um, so. A lot of what you saw earlier today was part of that, um, you know, exemption and credit process, a lot of things. Um, taxpayers will need to file for by April fifteenth, I don't know why it's April fifteenth rather than April first for application dates for exemptions and credits. Um, or property exemptions of any kind, should they exist? Um. But those um, applications need to be submitted by April fifteenth. So we can timely process them to make sure that if they are approved, if they meet all the statutory requirements, they can be applied for the first billing. Uh, to make sure that, you know, it's all, it's kind of divided between those two bills rather than reflected entirely at the end of the year. Um, that's especially important with things like elderly exemptions or um. Disabled credits, um, you know, anything where there's gonna be a substantial discount to the total assessed value of the property. In terms of the tax liability for the taxpayer, because. You know, if they've got a hundred thousand dollar property and they've got an eighty thousand dollar exemption, you know, they'd be paying on that hundred, hundred thousand dollar. Um, property for that first term, and then the town would basically have to return money at the second half, so it creates less of a hassle in terms of that. Um, but also it gives that financial ease, um, kind of amortized over those two bills as well, so it it creates a little bit of an ease on both ends. Of the process. Uh, and it makes things a little more predictable, they'll have a little more of an idea, you know, what is the impact gonna be once this is applied. Um, you know, to the property as a taxpayer, obviously, I think most people don't like surprises, I know I don't. Um, so we try to minimize that whenever possible. Um. Another thing that you'll see, um, typically, um, as Chris had mentioned earlier, when you see these um. Exemptions, credits, paperwork, they should all be audited before you see them, so. Kelly works in concert with me to make sure that, um, when people are submitting these applications, that they're submitting any necessary documentation. They're in completely and entirely filled out as they need to be, so the P A twenty-nine is the application form for exemptions and credits. It kind of covers all of them. Which makes it a bit of a confusing form to look at, there are lots of checkboxes, there are multiple sections, there are lots of instructions. Um, so generally, what I'm doing basically is make sure that we have the correct things checked off on the form. That the things that need to be checked off are checked off. And then any documentation to whichever credit or exemption is being applied for is there. Uh, Kelly does the legwork to make sure that, you know, the taxpayers are understanding what they need to submit, why they need to submit it, so we can process the application. Um, and it helps make things easier, because if we. Get audited as we normally do, um, on a revaluation or the state comes in and checks a certain percentage of. Um, exemptions and credits that are on file to make sure that the appropriate supporting documentation is with them. Um, they'll check our current use records to make sure that those property file records are meeting the standard they need to, so. They have the appropriate form, uh, they have a map doc- documenting where uh, these areas are that the current use program assessment is being applied. So that normally happens once in a five-year period, but it's important for us to make sure that we're on top of those things, because. We don't want to be giving credits or exemptions to people that shouldn't have them, because they don't actually qualify, so. We're very stringent on that, because every dollar that's exempted or credited, uh, is something the rest of the town has to pick up, so. Um. In that respect, we like to make sure that we're not giving any undue burden. Um, by making sure that we're meeting all the criteria before we're applying anything. by making sure that we're meeting all the criteria before we're applying anything to anybody's account in terms of that. Given that this year is a revaluation year, it's kind of a confusing process for a lot of people because five years is a lot of time to be able to forget about something. So despite all of our current stay-at-home orders and health concerns, social distancing, we've been able to maintain our anticipated schedule at this time. As a lot of things are right now, it's going to be a little bit of wait and see, play it, you know, and kind of adjust as we go. We're not anticipating, you know, losing or going past any contractual deadlines at this point. We've been able to kind of stay ahead on the field work. We got most of the pickups taken care of before the stay-at-home order was issued. So most of the inventory work to do pickups, check on those projects, building permits, most of that's already been completed and entered. So there shouldn't be any issue issuing the first billing. The warrant shouldn't be delayed by any data entry or field work that needs to be done. So I'm happy to report that for you. That's not the case for our communities. So, you know, we're happy to be able to not have that problem here. As we're going through the year, part of our process, we're going to be doing a full sales analysis. So we'll be reviewing property from the last year to 18 months. Normally that involves physically visiting the property in the exterior if we can. Normally it would include an interior inspection. Taxpayer would allow it. I think that's unlikely at this time. Currently, right now, due to signs, we are not doing interior inspections, so. I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
I don't know what that was.
Sorry, something kind of came through. I thought I was talking. As we go through the process, now I said we're not doing interior inspections. So as we go through, normally does present a little bit of a challenge, especially given the process. So we'll go through, we'll do a sales analysis with the properties to make sure the physical information is accurate as much as possible. We do have other tools help us do that. We have MLS, which gives us information about the interior, information sale. So it gives us, we do still have some other tools to make sure we're using accurate information to help up the assessments townwide. They see what that is because if for some reason something is about the property that can alter the model and skew it slightly. So we are cautious of it. We will be more cautious about that than usual this year. Because if there is an error, it does have an effect across the board. Obviously, one sale doesn't make the market. But we do try to make sure that everything is well cared for in that respect. After we finish our sales analysis, we will be field reviewing the entire town. So that will be two staff members in a marked vehicle driving physically every road in town with all the property cards for the entire town. We'll look at each one to make sure that the information looks correct, the physical attributes look accurate. We'll be looking at, you know, the landscaping, topography, we'll be looking at the physical aspects of the building, its condition, the materials on the outside. We'll want to make sure we have everything classified correctly. We'll be reviewing quality adjustments as those are somewhat subjective. But having two people in the car does really help make sure, you know, oh, what did we do on that house that looked like this three streets over? Are we doing the same thing here? So we want to make sure that we are treating everything consistently. So we have kind of an audit there in that respect. So once that process is complete, we'll go through and review everything again, make sure that we have some cleanup done ahead of time. Taxpayers will receive a letter in the mail after that point. It will be a preliminary notice of the values. So there will be the preliminary values based on the information we have from the preliminary sales analysis. Normally, after those are sent out, taxpayers will be able to review all of the preliminary assessment data online. So for every property in town, the letter that gets sent out, it will have the web address and everything detailed and bold in the letter for taxpayers to be able to access that information. After that process goes through, there'll be also a phone number that they will be able to call during a certain day window. So a certain number of days, I believe the contract says five days, so it'll be five days. And then during that window, between 8:00 and 4:30, they'd be able to call and make an appointment for informal hearing. Normally those happen in person at the town office. Still a bit of an unknown at this point. We're hoping that things are at a point where we're able to do that safely, where we're not having a large group. But if that's not possible or guidelines dictate that we shouldn't be doing that, we may have to do those by phone, but we are hoping that is not going to be necessary. But we are going to have to be playing that by ear. Once the informal hearing process is completed, we will review all the notes, concerns from taxpayers, make sure that we're not missing anything. Obviously, we can't know everything about a property, but homeowners are always the best audit for us because no one's going to know their property better than them. So there may be things on interiors that we haven't seen that need to be taken into consideration or issues with, you know, water drainage, some other encumbrance we're not aware of. We've been in town quite a while, so we're aware of a lot of things already. But if there are issues, we will certainly address them. You know, we want to make sure that the assessments are accurate because it doesn't benefit anyone if they're not. We want things to be consistent and fair. Equity is really important. And that's why we try to be very thorough through this process. And then once we've finished with all of that, we will take what we've done and we will test it against any sales that have occurred since the preliminary or preliminary sales analysis has been done and that current time period is usually later in the summer. And what we'll do is basically test the model that we've built against any sales that have occurred. And that will tell us, you know, is our model in place? Do we need to tweak some things to make sure that, you know, they meet kind of what's happening? Is the trend kind of change from what we've seen? Is it continuing in the same direction? Are we in the neighborhood of where we need to be? And then after that process is complete, any taxpayer who has had a meeting with us will get a letter with a notice of final value, what their assessment will be going forward. And anyone who's had a change to their assessment as a result of any changes from the informal hearings. So if someone has, say, a property on the water and there's a change to waterfront values based on information that we gather during the informal hearing process. If that change would affect, say, 50 properties out of all the properties on the lake, then anyone that had a change to their value, whether they had a meeting or not, would get a final notice of value from us just to let them know that there has been a change from the preliminary value. We like this process because it tends to give us a chance to kind of correct any problems per se before they're really problems. It's easier to kind of address any concerns or issues before billing goes out, helps cut down on abatements. We like that because obviously, you know, if we can answer questions or general concerns before we get to the process of sending bills, it's certainly helpful for everyone. So that's kind of a general overview of the process for this year, where we'll be going with the revaluation. Normally, in years in between, we go out and we do cyclical data verification. So a certain number of properties are chosen annually based on the contract. We go out and physically visit the properties, do what I said we would be doing with sales earlier. Now try and interview homeowner, now ask to verify information if it's okay to measure the exterior of the buildings. If possible, in normal circumstances, we would ask if possible to tour the interior. And then normally any property that we don't see the interior, we would send a letter to give a chance to set up an appointment for interior inspection at a later date if desired. As always, when we do our process, taxpayers always have the right to say, no, thank you. I don't want you to be inside. I don't want you to visit the property. We know, especially as of late, things have gotten a little more interesting in terms of security and people wanting notifications. So we have started sending letters out ahead of time as part of that process to give taxpayers a chance to opt out of being visited. They'll still get a letter which will give them a chance to set up an appointment for us to come by at their request. But otherwise, we would view the property from the street and estimate to the best of our ability and to try and make sure that everything is accurate. You know, people, certainly we value that people, you know, respect that they would like their privacy and we absolutely understand that and have the utmost respect for it. At the same time, we want to make sure that we're doing a fair job. So there are some challenges there, but we shifted to this model in this past year and it's made a lot of difference, I think, in terms of assessing staff, interaction with taxpayers. It's been very helpful. And going forward, that will be the procedure in town as well. So I think that's kind of a general overview of most everything. Did anyone have any questions?
Some of the material that was sent out today, looks like you had some write-up on current use. You want to talk about that just for the benefit of the?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should touch on that. Yeah, so current use program, it's basically a law was written late 60s. It was enacted in the early 70s. Basically, it was, there were a lot of kind of poorly thought out subdivisions happening at the time. And the idea around the current use program was that you could have, those that have large tracts of land, they would be able to benefit by enrolling this property program to reduce the tax burden or the assessment based on essentially a promise to keep that land in a certain state. So it would mean it would be undeveloped. It would be in certain circumstances, open to the public for recreation. But it was, the idea was to help conserve open space and keep it from being developed. This also process and program was beneficial for a lot of farmers. It gave them a chance to be able to maintain their lands and reduce the tax burden, the land itself, while still using it for agricultural purposes. So there are size restrictions in terms of what is allowed in current use. You need to be able to enroll at least 10 acres of a property or properties that are contiguous with the exact same name of ownership into the program. You know, in terms of the application process, there's a form to fill out. It needs to be provided with a map, a description of the property, the acreages of the different areas. So there are different categories. It gets involved, but we'll just kind of give a general overview. You will see these for signatures occasionally. We don't tend to see a ton of them. You'll be more likely to see a land use change tax come across your desk at some point, which is basically when a property is physically changed, like say in a subdivision, the property would remain in current use in perpetuity until either it is sold and there's not enough acreage, those 10 acres, to maintain it in the program, or if, say, it's subdivided and put into development. So if that were to happen, the land is physically changed or if it's subdivided and a smaller portion is sold off, that program, that property would no longer qualify to be enrolled in the current use assessment. And that would mean that the property would be subject to a change tax. So it would be 10% of that property's actual value at the time of change. So for instance, we've had a subdivision go in Maple Ridge in the past couple of years. As part of that process, that land was enrolled in current use. As it was developed, we needed to remove sections of that from that overall larger tract. And at that time, we needed to assign land use change taxes to those parcels that were in question. So that is kind of part of the process in terms of exiting current use. Generally speaking, there aren't a lot of changes with that, but it does happen occasionally and you'll receive a letter explaining why along with any reason that there would be a land use change tax for approval prior to it actually going out. So that's kind of a general overview of just current use there. Are there any questions on that? I know it's counterintuitive based on the name, but.
No, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, we have a pickup, standard verification. The only other thing that you'll see occasionally is, I think Chris mentioned it earlier briefly, timber tax. You know, they'll have to file an intent to cut typically, you know, loggers will come in. They know the process. They don't particularly enjoy it necessarily, but they're familiar with it. So normally timber tax does go through the assessing office. Kelly will end up handling most of that. And then if there are questions, I'll be consulted for those, but typically it's able to be handled in-house. There are certain restrictions in terms of landowners are allowed to do a certain amount of cutting based on certain, you know, allowances within the statute. They're kind of outlined briefly there on the paperwork. You know, if they're not required to have an intent to cut. But given that there is quite a lot of open land in town, quite a bit of it in current use as well, typically when we see a logger come in, there will be an intent to cut. They'll have to report what's been cut and what is being either brought to the mill or turned into pulp. And then there is basically a calculation done to figure out, you know, what that timber tax is. It's billed and then it has to be paid, which is good because it ends up being revenue for the town. And it gives a check as well onto how much is actually being cut. So the state has a division that actually monitors that. This is true of sand and gravel as well. It's a similar type of thing. It doesn't run into that a lot in town. I think there's only one or two properties I'm aware of that actually have pits and I think only one may still be active. But it's a similar thing. There's a tax levied on so many yards that are excavated and based on what they are as well. So those things are usually run through the assessing office. You'll see them come through for an approval for signature typically, usually just when the bill is going to be issued. But otherwise, that's usually handled in-house.
It's kind of an interesting one though, Jonathan, isn't it? Isn't it because it's basically on our system, right?
For the most part, yes. You know, if it is difficult, you know, like I said, the state does keep an eye on those things, but typically, you know, depending on how it is, there are some checks and balances on it. Sometimes there'll be a bonding required once an intent to cut is filed, depending on the size of the cut that's intended. Or, you know, there are some that develop a reputation and, you know, that can be more stringent. But, and generally speaking, it is kind of an honor system. In some instances, they will require to be a forester to kind of go and verify what's being cut. But it is, in some sense, a bit of a self-reporting, yes.
That's, that's a lot of good useful information, Jonathan. Thank you.
I know it's a lot to digest. I've been doing this for a little over 10 years now and there's still stuff that I come across and have to check on. So if you ever have questions, I'm certainly happy to address them. And as we go through this process, we'll try and make sure the board is aware where we're at with the revaluation as we're going through it. We touch base with the office regularly when we're in town. And I see Chris and Kelly typically once a month, sometimes more, but Kelly's in contact with me via email constantly. And we're able to address most day-to-day things that way. But coming into the office is great to be able to, you know, put in FaceTime, answer questions for taxpayers, you know. And Nottingham is a little bit unique where there are some odd things that come up in terms of assessing. So it's always interesting and it's always a little bit different, but those things are kind of nice. It's nice to be able to, you know, see a little bit of a challenge and deal with those things together and it's been great. Kelly's been wonderful support and it's been really great having her to assist in my duties. So, you know, I've been very pleased and she's been great support. So thank you for that. Is there anything else that I can answer for anybody today?
Glad we can keep it interesting for you, Jonathan.
It always is. There's always something new in town.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
All right, well, thank you for having me and I hope you all. All right, well, thank you for having me, and I hope you all stay healthy and well.
Thank you, you too.
You too, thanks.
Thank you.
It appears that I'm muted.
Oh, no.
All right, moving on to general business. What have we got? Assumption, well, we kind of discussed that, right, already? Approval and deputy treasurer appointment?
Yeah, so you have a memo from me that is essentially a copy of an email from Cheryl Travis, asking you to approve Susan Bascom as deputy treasurer. As I told you a couple of weeks ago, Susan got the second-most write-in votes, and is willing to take the job. The best way that everybody could figure to transition into that, where they can't really get together easily to do any kind of handoff or training, was to start out appointing her as a deputy and let her and Cheryl work together over the next couple of months to make that a smooth transition. That makes sense from the staff point of view, it makes sense to the two of them. If it makes sense to you, you can approve that appointment, and we should be all set with officers from here on.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to RSA 41, semi-colon, 29 dash 8. The select board approved the appointment of Susan Bascom as deputy treasurer.
Tony seconds.
Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor? Ivan Bartlett.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Aye, Tyler Eaton.
Aye, John Morn.
Okay. Thank you. And then the next is library trustee Laura Cottrell. I think I talked through, it wasn't two weeks ago, it was four weeks ago. They've got a lot of transitions going on, people coming and going. This is the fifth and final slot they need to fill, at least until... Yeah, this is the fifth and final. They had a meeting last week. So their governance is in good shape. Their board, their trustees are on top of things. They just need this one more slot filled with your approval.
Pursuant to RSA 669, colon, 75, I make a motion that the select board appoints Laura Cottrell as library trustee.
Second. Tyler Eaton.
Do you have a motion in a second? All in favor? Ivan Bartlett.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Aye, Tyler Eaton.
Aye, John Morn.
Thank you. Okay, what else we have here?
That looks like all we had listed under general business.
Yeah.
So I had, I had one thing I wanted to bring up. One of the things that we talked about as a board this year is trying to do a better job, you know, getting communications out there. And I, in fact, did have a request from someone in the community about, you know, kind of getting an update on where we are with, you know, authority to spend the budget and that kind of stuff. So I wanted to get a sense from you guys of, you know, how frequently do you think that we should kind of be disseminating a board communication? And I know a lot of the stuff is covered in meetings, and that people could comb through meeting minutes. But, you know, do you think, like, for example, on a monthly basis, maybe we should just be putting out a short, here's a ch-ch-ch update from the board? Or do you think there's a different approach that we should be taking?
I'm open to suggestions on that. I mean, do you have an idea in mind, Donna, other than, you know, the meetings? I mean, what is the monthly thing, or, I mean, what do you think would work?
Yeah, I mean, I think there are some things that, like, we could give people updates on, like USA Springs, where we are, you know, what's empowering us to spend budget before town meeting. We're not talking about anything lengthy or big. You know, it just could be some quick updates. But again, I'd like to hear what you guys think.
Well, the question that comes to mind first with any official communication that we do is what medium are we going to use for it, right? There are some people that would rather have all the town's business conducted on Facebook. And of course, not everybody uses that. You know, some people would like to have everything texted straight to their phones, and so on, and so on. So we could, you know, just stick to the common denominator and put it all on the town website. But we'd have to make it easy to reach, because all the information we have to distribute is already on the town website, and people generally won't go there, unless there's something really controversial or something pressing. So I guess we'd have to find find a way of getting that message out in a way that is easy for people to digest. Or if we do put it on the town website, how to make it prominent and easy to get to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also, you know, if you guys think it's not necessary, and that people should just, there's everything that they need that's on the website, then that's fine, too. I'm just wanting to put it out there for the guys.
Yeah, you're going to be basically regurgitating everything that we went over anyway, right? I mean, that's not on the website? I mean, everything's on the website. So do we really need to put another thing up there?
I'll look for other members of the board to comment on that as well.
Are you talking, Donna, just like a breakdown of, you know, what we've done at the meetings? Not to go through the whole...
Well, I think there's questions now, like, how is it that the town is still spending budget money, even though we haven't had town meeting and approved expenditures?
Maybe the flip side of this would be to provide a mechanism for people to submit questions like that, and that we could answer them on the town website, or or whatever, you know? And of course, people can still email the board.
Yeah.
But...
I mean, there are ways of getting to communicate with us. I look towards, you know, I mean, if we want to put out something every month that just says, hey, here's a quick reader's digest of what we did, and how we make it, put it out there. I mean, obviously, you can do, like, that was on the town website. You have the red bulletin that pops up on the... But how long are you going to keep it up there for? You know, if people want to see the minutes, and somebody's concerned about something, they can just go back and look at them, and they're there. Everything's open to the public. But yeah, how do you communicate this all? I mean, most people would like to probably see it on Facebook. I don't think that's a formal...
That's not a channel of the board.
No, exactly. So I don't see that to be viable, you know, a town website, but...
Yep. So I'm okay not doing it if you guys think that we're sufficiently covered. That's fine.
We are, because if you want to go back and look at our minutes in our meetings, it's just go to the board of selectmen, and it's right there on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
It tells you the minutes, tells you upcoming agenda. Just went and looked at it, told them if anyone wanted to join the Zoom meeting tonight, all the information was there, which is absolutely excellent of you guys doing, I think that's great. But, you know, people got to, you know, they want to be spoon-fed, but take some initiative. Not that hard to find out.
Well, I think, you know, what you said a minute ago, calling it a reader's digest condensed version, that's the, you know, that's the quick and dirty, you know, you know, headline-type information that people probably want to see, you know? And then we can always put a note in there to, you know, for more details, go, you know, go read the minutes, go read the webs, whatever. But maybe that would be best done in the Nottingham newsletter.
So I had a question, but I understand what Donna said earlier about the, you know, people with the big, serious questions. But let's look back at what our reader's digest would be for counting this meeting, since we're almost to the end, hopefully, and the last meeting. What are the real bullet points that you're going to put out that somebody really wants to know? I just don't want to see over-undue work focused on something that doesn't seem to be necessary when the information's already there.
Yeah.
You know, because we don't have, I mean, want to talk about what we said for assessing? We talked about assessing.
Right, okay.
That's it. You know, you want to get the details on it? Well, I mean, not very exciting. So I think we're doing that was good. But, you know, when it does come to something more serious and more financially important to the town, that we do, you know, find it maybe a better way, you know, besides the town website, or something about posting for people, but...
Okay, cool. Well, I want you guys, your feedback, so, cool. Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Did you want to review anything for the next meeting, or?
Oh, yeah.
Jumping the gun there, huh?
Todd was going to call the Illinois firm.
Oh, that sounds good right about now. Am I still on?
Yeah, you are.
All right. Review action items for the next meeting?
So that's our to-do list.
Yeah.
Lorraine, did you capture any action items?
I put tuckaway maps and trail markers.
Awesome. Okay.
And then I'm going to put together a cheat sheet on setting up Zoom meetings for the various committee chairs.
You're going to put that on... Is there something on the site already in regards to Zoom? I don't know if you saw that question, somebody had asked about a question about putting it up there. So those who are not familiar with Zoom are knowing that the meetings are still going to take in place.
Yeah, so I've got the next meeting scheduled as well. And basically, we're going to use the same meeting ID over and over. It's going to be just like a standing meeting identification. So, so the same way people connected tonight, they'll do the same thing in two weeks, and so on, and so on.
Okay.
Hey, getting back one second for listed action items. What, we're just going to talk about the state park thing again, or is somebody actually calling the state? Is somebody or the park about the trail maps? Is this... Or is there discussion on it?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that that's a specific action item for us, John, I think.
Well, I know, I'm just saying, is it going to be listed as that?
Yeah, I think it's more like we have kind of an agreement to meet with the folks from the park. I think Chris and I had said, like, at the end of a season, at the end of each season, we would meet with them to kind of have a conversation with them. I think that the next time that we meet with them, we just ought to kind of raise that as a discussion point with them. So I don't see it as a immediate action item.
I understand that, yep.
Yeah.
That's why I just want to make sure we're not listing it as an action, right? If we're not...
Yeah, yeah.
Action.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to, you know, meet with the state park guy or do anything like that, if you guys need me to reach out or something, so... If we decide on whatever we want to say or ask, or...
Yeah.
Did, um, Ben, did you want to open the floor if anybody in the audience had any questions?
Yeah, anybody in the audience, if anybody left that want to...
Steve, just one question. What is Jonathan's actual job? Who is he?
He's the contract assessor for the town. He works for Avatar.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Steve. Okay.
Tyler?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Don.
You guys reading this chat that... Did you guys just read the chat? From the...
Yeah.
Just making sure everybody's all right.
Okay, so we ready to adjourn? If you had a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Tyler Eaton.
Aye, John Morn.
Okay.
Thanks, Tony, for getting us through this again.
No problem.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good one. Bye, everybody.